Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's council meeting. For those who are joining us on television, I will note that tonight's meeting is actually being delayed and will be shown on Rogers Cable tomorrow, Tuesday, June the 12th, at 2:00 PM. However, the live stream on the City of Kitchener's website is live tonight. So with that, welcome, everyone, and if I can invite everyone to stand as they're able Okay, it's been moved by Councilor Yonetski that the minutes of the regular meeting held May 7th, 2018, and the special meetings held May 7th, 8th, and 28th, 2018, as mail to the mayor and councillors, be accepted. All in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest? Councilor Singh.
Yes, and the reports of the committees for Committee, Community and Infrastructure Services, item number eight, for Mauser Ave., my parents have property on that street, so I'll recuse myself from that vote.
Okay, we'll deal with that item separately. And there are, sorry, the communications that is listed will be referred to file. All in favor? Opposed, that is carried. We will now move into presentations, and I'll just note that Ms. Tova-Davidson, the Executive Director of Sustainable Waterloo Region, there was a scheduling conflict with coming this evening, so they will likely reschedule, or we will follow up with them, but they're not able to be here this evening. And so now we are going to move to one of my most fun nights of the year, when we get to honor our long-term organizations and volunteers in the city. And so I will turn it over to Marla Pender, Facilitator of Volunteer Services.
Mayor and council, the City of Kitchener has a long history of working with volunteers. Whether they volunteer once at an event, monthly on an advisory committee, or weekly in a program, our volunteers have a tremendous and positive impact on the community. Tonight, it's my great pleasure to be here, on behalf of all the staff of the City of Kitchener, as well as all of the citizens who benefit from the service our volunteers provide, to help council celebrate the long-service milestone anniversaries of some of our valued volunteer groups. So I'd like to invite Mayor Vabenevic to announce the award recipients and present the certificates to the representatives who are here tonight.
Wonderful, thank you very much, Marla. And just for ease of movement tonight, since Humpty Dumpty had a great fall, we're actually going to do the presentations here by the flags, and so I would invite folks to come down as you get invited. Tonight, we're going to start with the presentations to our minor sport groups. Healthy citizens make a healthy community. Forty minor sport organizations are affiliated with the City of Kitchener, operated by volunteers who serve as executive members, coaches, team members, team managers, rather, special event organizers, and fundraisers. From basketball to water polo, there is an activity for every sport enthusiast of all abilities. The first group we're going to celebrate tonight is the Kitchener Waterloo Sports Council and Kid Sport. John Cooper, President, and Brian Horn, Treasurer, are here tonight to accept this certificate of appreciation in celebration of 20 years of service to the community. Next, we celebrate the Waterloo Region Track III Ski School, and I welcome Sean Turner, President, and Simone Marchessault, Director, to accept this certificate of appreciation for 25 years of service to our community. Okay, next up, please welcome Janice Moore, the Past President and Treasurer, and Rob Wells, the Co-Head Coach of the KW Diving Club, to accept this certificate of appreciation for the club's 30 years of community contributions. Next, we celebrate the KW Surtoma Speed Skating Club, and I welcome Angela Shroom, President, to accept this certificate of appreciation for 55 years of service to our community. And our final presentation to a minor sports group tonight is the Kitchener Waterloo Skating Club, which is celebrating 80 years of continued programming and community building in Kitchener. Allison Sims, President, is here to accept the certificate of appreciation. Now I'd invite Councilor Etherington to join me at the podium. Another way volunteers positively impact our community is through volunteering directly in city facilities. Tonight, we celebrate the contributions made by two groups who offer ongoing programming at the Rockway Center. First, please welcome Roberta Harvey, Chairperson, and Stella Burnham, Treasurer, from the Rockway Friends Program, which is celebrating 40 years of service. And next, please welcome Michelle Allard, the Director and Pianist, to accept this certificate of appreciation for the Happy Harmonicas 40 years of service to our community. Okay, next, if I can invite Councilor Marsh to the podium. And now we'll move on to the celebration of our neighborhood associations. Kitchener residents enjoy a wealth of programs and resources close to home, thanks to a working partnership we have with volunteers from the many neighborhood associations that operate across our community. The first one that we're going to celebrate tonight is the Mount Hope Riteup Park Neighborhood Association. Thank you to Levi Oki and Emily Slofstra, Co-Chairs, for being here tonight to accept our appreciation for the association's 35 years of service to their neighborhood.
So I just wanted to say, truthfully, I'm accepting this on behalf of someone who could not make it tonight, Trudy. Many around this horseshoe would know Trudy and her service here, but she could, somewhere else now, so we're very thankful for Trudy.
Thank you. Very fitting, and for those who don't know, Levi was speaking about Trudy Bone, who was for many, many years, maybe even the founder of the Neighborhood Association, and certainly the backbone of it for many, many years, and has done wonderful work, and Trudy passed away earlier this year, late last, earlier this year. We'll now move on to Councilor Yonetski. And now I'd like to invite up the Green Belt Neighborhood Association, represented by Judy Anne Chapin, Coordinator and Facilitator, and Kate Lawson, Member, and the Green Belt Association is celebrating 40 years of service to the community this year. And next, please welcome Mark Johnson, Vice President, and Pauline Freeman, Special Events Coordinator, of the Victoria Hills Neighborhood Association, to accept this certificate of And now I'll invite Councilor Singh to join me, and we'd now like to welcome the Chandler-Moore Neighborhood Association, represented by Emily Pike, Chair, and Janine Vidal, Treasurer, who are celebrating 25 years of service to the community this year. And now I can ask Councilor Galloway-Seelock to come up, and we will now welcome Tom Fensky, President, and Chris, or maybe just Christine Furnas, Vice President, of the Williamsburg Community Association, to accept this certificate of appreciation for their 10 years of community And now I'll invite Councilor Gazola. And our final neighborhood association here tonight is the Setlers Grove Association, celebrating 10 years of continued programming and community building in Kitchener. Lourdes Jordao, President, and Helen Van Ash, Director of Landscaping, are here to accept I'd also like to take this opportunity to extend our thanks and appreciation to three groups who couldn't be here with us tonight. Congratulations to the Huron Community Association, which is celebrating five years of service, the Country Hills Recreation Association, which is celebrating 35 years of service, and the KW Olympic Field Hockey Association, which is celebrating 35 years of service. Please join me in giving them a round of applause as well. You know, one of the things that I'm often proud to talk about when I speak with people, whether in our own community or in other communities, is the dedication of our volunteers, and that is so true. And tonight alone, we've celebrated the collective dedication of all these people and all these organizations for 530 years of service to Kitchener, and we're so grateful for all of that. So please, on behalf of all of us on Kitchener Council and the entire community, extend our thanks and our appreciation to everyone on your boards of directors, your volunteers, and your sponsors, without whom everything that you do wouldn't be possible, and we wouldn't be able to be the great community that we are without all of your contributions. So thank you very much, everyone, thank you for joining us this evening, and at this point, you're welcome to join us for the rest of the night, if you're so inclined, but if you're not, we won't be offended if you take the opportunity to slide out, and we'll maybe break for a minute while that happens. We'll move on to reports of the committees, and I'll start with Finance and Corporate Services, Councilor, Councilor Davy, rather, my apologies. Go ahead.
It's been moved by myself and seconded by Councilor Dave Schneider that the two items from Finance and Corporate Services Committee be adopted.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Gazola.
Yeah, there were, I'd like the first item dealt with separately.
So I'll deal with number two then first. All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Back to you, Councilor Gazola, for number one.
Yeah, I would like a recorded vote on this issue. It deals with the creativity hub. I did not support it when it was before us, it's almost three weeks ago. I did have a number of questions that I asked about it, things that concerned me about the issue. I'd done a considerable additional amount of research. I do want to make it very clear that I do support arts and creativity, and neither one is new, there's been a lot of creativity in this, this community, there's a lot of creativity in the old manufacturing industries and what have you, it's not a, it's not a brand-new thing, and it'll be something that is with us, it's an important, it's an important issue, no question about it. It's a shame that the arts programs for children have been removed from our, considerably removed from our education system. It's difficult now to have any programs that children used to be able to get involved with in the past. I mentioned last week also that the government, senior government, has done its share in not supporting this whole issue by eliminating a very minor grant or deduction that they allowed to families for paying, for getting into arts programs. And to me, there are so, there are so many other issues, and I believe that in the past, the city has, has gone a long way to, to help the arts community. And I'm not sure that it worked out always the way I expected. I know we've given considerable amount, larger amounts of money, but I'm not sure that it got to all of our arts organizations, but that's, that's another, that's another issue. We have now before us, again, another proposal for helping this sector, and I'm prepared to see funds go into the art sector. We, this council already approved a $800,000 allocation from the property we sold on Ontario Street. That's fine, but I'm not sure that this, this direction is the best place to put that money. And let's face it, that it is, it is $800,000 that is coming out of this community, and indirectly, it's coming out of the pockets of our, of our taxpayers. Looking at this proposal, I find it's more a question of want as opposed to need. I see a lot of other areas that the needs are much larger, and there, in my mind, there are too many questions that I've not been able to get answered. We've been operating that, that building as, in this fashion for the last two years, but we really don't have any information on that to help guide us where we're looking for going down the road the next five years, so I, we, at one point, we were going to look at other alternatives for, for that building, for that property. These alternatives have just been set aside, they're not, we're not even taking, we're not even examining them. One of the big issues that we talked about two years ago was, was the life of the boiler. The boiler was going to die any minute, or could die, or, and when it does happen, it's an expensive proposal, and there was no real clear outline as where, what direction we're going to move in. So at this point, I can support money's going into arts and creativity, but not at this venue, so I will not be supporting the recommendation that's before us, and I ask for a recorded vote.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Fernandez.
Thanks. So I also had quite a few questions, and I want to thank Emily Robson for her very detailed responses to me, as well as to Councilor Gazola. And I did look up, she had referred to a couple of other reports, one specifically the Registry Theatre Strategic Refresh. I have a couple of questions that came, that come out of, out of that. In that refresh, the message we heard over and over again was performance space. In your responses to me, you essentially shared that we are not going to be seeing performance space happening on the first floor of 44 Gauckal. Is that, was that a correct understanding?
Ms. Robson?
Through the chair, I was hoping to clarify that while we have seen some site-specific performances, that may continue, that the difference between the Registry Theatre, the Conrad Centre for the Performing Arts, and the Centre in the Square, and what we've been seeing happen at 44 Gauckal are really worlds apart, right? The infrastructure that we see at those professional theatres is far beyond what we'd ever imagined installing in 44 Gauckal, so that was what I was hoping to clarify.
Okay, and I appreciate that, because I, I think you, I kind of had that sense of understanding, but I guess my drilling down deeper is, is my concern is that we have a fantastic performance group in the JM Drama and Lost and Found Theatre, and we, I feel we should be building on that existing group. With a little bit more funding, I believe that they would be pulling, they would be keeping not only artists here, but also our community here, to watch the performances that they put out, and I'm, and I'm talking about performances as it differentiates between presentations, because some of our groups do presentations, and in my questions to you, I had asked about the differences, and, and just for clarification to council, a presentation is something that is bought from another community and brought to our community. And it differs in that the money sort of actually goes back out of this community, where a performance, we draw on the artists here, on the set builders, on the musicians, on the sound engineers, we draw on that from, mainly from this area, so the money stays here. The other concern I had was, and I keep going back to the performance, because I think, I thought that that's where we were going with this arts build community, not arts build, sorry, this arts hub. When we talk about the different groups that are going to be working, rehearsing, building, creating in this space, we're talking about very, very different community groups. We're talking about some technology sector, we're talking about performance arts. Are we talking about also arts that related to medium, like sculpting and painting and that kind, or are we more focused on performing arts?
Ms. Robson?
Through the, sorry, excuse me, through the chair, we're really creating an opportunity to see how the space could be used. We know what we've seen in this space so far, and we have seen quite a number of different types of disciplines working in this space, and I think to maybe answer your question, I was speaking to the Director of Globe Studios, and she talked about how having in their studio, that is visual arts studio, as well as potting, it was very difficult to have anyone dealing in media arts, just because if you have electronic equipment, you can't have dust from, you know, pottery. So I think there are some very real kind of delineations into how space can be used, but we've been very successful to this point, creating a community of users that are respectful of each other's work, and who are buying into the advantages of being co-located. So I think to answer your question, there are some limitations, but we have found that it's been a wider cross-section of disciplines than we may have anticipated.
Okay, and I think that's one of the things we, I am not sure, but I thought I recollected one of my colleagues asking for a review after two years. Is that, did I hear that correctly? Yes? Because I think it's important to know where we're going to be in two years. Do we know, are we going to understand, is, is the technology groups that are there, the startups that are there, and our performing artists are there, or our writers, or our poets, is that space working for them? Because when we, when there's rehearsals, and our professional artists rehearse during the day, that's going to be a conflict to any other businesses who may need some quiet time, or need, need meeting rooms, or whatever else they need. So I think that's, that's critical. I know I've run out of time, and Mr. Mayor, is there more people after me?
There are numerous people.
Okay, well, then I will click out and click in again.
Okay. Councilor Singh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wasn't really planning on speaking on this, because simply as I saw the report from staff, this endeavor just made sense to me. At times, I think our memories are short, not too long ago, 10 to 15 years, we didn't have the level of confidence we do in downtown back then. We didn't have the successes with the partnership with the University of Waterloo, or the success of Communitech, or the thriving new housing development that's coming into our core, or the exciting, dynamic new businesses or startups that are formulating in our core, or the large, you know, businesses like, you know, tech giants like Google, that think that this is an exciting, thriving place to do business. We didn't have that confidence 10 to 15 years ago, but we do now, and that's because of the successes of those programs, and so has been the Accelerator Center and Arts Build Ontario, their combination space on the second floor of the Gauckal Building, that has been a success. And I see this as broadening space on the main floor of nothing more than just carrying on and thriving, and, sorry, encouraging that collaborative approach that's succeeding already, and that's why I think we need to give it a chance. Not everything we've done has ultimately worked out, you know, to the 100% of our expectation, but a lot of stuff has, and this is something that's already working, and for us to not to continue to support it would just not make sense.
Thank you. Councilor Marsh, you're up next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The arts need support from all levels of government. We know this. For those of us who took the time to tour the building at 44 Gauckal, we saw it as a thriving site for collaboration, for startups in the arts and in hardware sectors. The opportunity for collisions of ideas and the affordable rents make it a dynamic place to be creative. At committee, two weeks ago, we had an incredible articulate group of artists who told us, this model is working, and asked us to support the recommendation. How could we not? We also heard specifically from the Director of the JM Drama Operating Registry Theatre, they are full up, they are at capacity or beyond. The The rehearsal space here at 44 Gaucal is going to provide some relief to their schedule, because when they are asked for rehearsal space, they can refer people to other locations such as 44 Gaucal, so that they can maintain openings for those who want to have performance space at registry. It's working, it needs to be supported.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Etherington.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to say that I fully support this creative hub and the information before us. You can't have it both ways. You either support the arts, or you don't. Counselor Gazola is once again sucking and blowing at the same time. He's not an education official, or a school trustee cutting arts programs, and he's not a representative of a higher level of government anxious to cut arts dollars. He's got a chance to support local arts, and no matter what he says, he's about to vote to cut those funds, which are completely justified to support our local arts culture. So, I would urge counsel to support what we have before us.
Thank you. Counselor Snyder.
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. It was clear at the committee meeting, the importance and the need for this creative hub. It's a mix of arts and technology. Let's remember, the Accelerator Centre is part of that. Paul Salvini was in, talking about how the environment there inspires, and how the creative piece is a big part of technology. JM Drama alumni came in and clearly appreciate this place, the rehearsal space, and saying it gave them the seeds to grow. The Greenlights Arts, who produced 15 productions here at the hub since 2016, saying they had the space they had at the hub, gave them the savings that allow them to do more. Counselor Singh's amendment for the midway report of this initiative to plan for the future, I think will spell out and give us a clear path to continued sustainability of this hub. It's going to bring some great vitality to our city with what is produced there, what comes out of there. It shows that we are a centre of innovation, not just in technology, but also in the arts. And I look forward to supporting this.
Counselor Anetski.
Yes, thank you. Last meeting when we considered this, I was in a dilemma as to whether to support it or not. And I did support it on that, but still subject to review in terms of the number of the questions my colleagues had posed to staff and the responses they received. There is potential here in this particular centre to move forward, and I do see some merit in it. But I do still have concerns when the dollars and cents were responded to in terms of how the money was coming from, from the 48 Ontario, and taxpayers' money going to be used to fund this particular process. And then, one of the questions asked also was the boiler issue. And I remember that during our tour, two years ago, that there was a concern raised, and now two years have passed, maybe the risk is even higher. And that's not even included in the calculations, as a potential concern and risk, and how many, how much that's going to cost, and that's a huge expense as well. I see that the money here could be spent in a better direction on, instead of going to the arts and supporting this. I see the potential there, but I think that the money could be allocated to a different sources, that I think is more of a need than a want in this particular case.
Counselor Ionidas.
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. I think if we look at this report and everything else, one of the things that I think is rather not mentioned often, and what it is, is the amount of detail in reports that we went to the community on, countless times, numerous times, and Veronix, Compass Kitchener, they all ask for supporting the arts and the arts hub. I find it quite interesting to hear individuals who claim to be advocates listening to residents and just ignore those claims. I was going to go and look at the report in detail about the financials and explain that, but I think my colleague on the Chair of Finance is going to talk about the finances. But this is clearly what the residents want, and by not supporting this, you're saying you don't really listen to the residents.
Counselor Davey.
Thank you. I do want to be 100% clear on the implications and the finances of this. For anyone that's not familiar, the only real funding that's going to this is coming from the sale of the Legion Building on Ontario Street. Half of the funds from that is the funding source for this development. What that means is that the taxpayers will not be paying one extra penny going forward for this initiative. I want to be 100% clear on that to start with. Second thing I want to mention is that that allocation of that sale, half of the funding, was supported by this council. And I hope the members that are speaking against it now, I hope they know where they stood when they voted on this issue, in terms of supporting the arts and using that funding to go towards it. The last thing I want to speak about is this issue of want versus need. I am one of the first people that struggles with putting tax dollars towards art for art's sake. I do think that's a difficult thing to sort of pin down and to put taxpayers' dollars towards. This is not that. This is very much the business side of arts and culture. We had Dr. Paul Salvini, who used to be the Chief Tactical Officer at Christie Digital, and is now the head of the Accelerator Centre, come and tell us the same thing he's been telling us through other previous careers. We have a creative content missing piece in our local economy. And if I can use an analogy, basically what it means is that we, in our community, we have lots of people that, you know, create the paints and the brushes and the canvases. We don't have enough people that can actually paint the picture. And that's the content that our local businesses need. It's a missing cog in our economic engine locally. What this initiative does is it helps to sort of fill that need in the short term. We're talking about a five-year plan and looking at it again in two years, in the short term, so in the meantime, so staff can come up with, or hopefully the private sector can come up with, a more permanent, full solution. I think it's appropriate, it's cost-effective, and I'm happy to support it.
Counselor Fernandez.
Thank you. So, the other, sorry, I'm writing some comments here. The other question I had was related to the cost of this. So, we've costed it out for five years. That's leasehold improvements, building improvements. We haven't factored in the boiler situation into those costs. Is that right? I'm probably repeating what we've already heard, and I apologize for that.
Through the chair, that's correct.
Okay. So, what is our plan if the boiler goes in two years? What is our next step? What is our plan for all of these groups that are going to be there, who may have got set construction started, who've got rehearsal space, who've got costuming in there, who've got all kinds of material in there? What is our plan?
Mr. Redman?
Through the mayor. So, there's some clarifications provided at the last committee meeting that talked about the boiler's at the end of its life cycle, but it's still running along fine at this point in time. The other clarification was that there's actually two boilers, and they don't operate at the same time, so annually, they're alternated back and forth, so there's a backup boiler essentially at the property. And I believe Ms. Robson explained at the committee meeting that there's a termination clause in this lease, that if the building were to fail, that we could terminate the lease at that point in time. So, we'd only spend the money that we've spent up until that point in time, and I think a lot of the improvements that are outlined in here are the reusable modular furnishings, which would not necessarily stay with that building, they could be relocated elsewhere.
Okay, and I agree, and I apologize, for some reason, my agenda from the last meeting has disappeared, I had lots of notes in there. Okay, that's fine, but I'm still asking, what is our next plan? I mean, yes, so we've got two boilers, and one is working at one time and the other is not. But they're old, and we've, you know, that red flag was raised a number of years ago by staff. I just want to make sure that we're not setting an expectation for these arts groups that we won't be able to fulfill if something happens.
Mr. Redman?
Through the chair. So, I believe the report spoke a little bit to it, but the intent of this essentially pilot is to, we know that 10,000 square feet is working well, we think that 20,000 square feet is working well. When we make a long-term investment into a creative hub, we want to make sure we get that space allocation right. So, by taking a measured, stepwise approach, we think that that's a more rationalized approach than going all in with a permanent solution at this point in time. And so, this is a five-year plan utilizing an existing building that's being occupied for five years or held up for five years before anything can happen with that property. So, part of that rationale is to utilize that space as best possible, and we have to pay CAMs and different aspects on it anyway, even if the space isn't being used, so why not use it appropriately and test out a model?
Okay, and I can't disagree with you. There's nothing worse than having an empty building. It's important to have it functioning and having activity there. And I spoke to George, I won't attempt to say his last name from Alert Labs, and they talked very much about how having, being in that space was very positive for them, and that's why they chose to stay in the downtown core. If there's, I have comments, but I wanted to reserve them unless there are other questions from others.
You make your comments now, because this is your second time around, so.
Yeah, okay.
Go ahead.
All right. So, I've really reviewed this, and I took the time to speak to somebody who's very involved in our community in the performing arts, a very integral partner in the performing arts in this community. And what she told me is that we have lots of fledgling groups, we have lots of little tiny incubators who are trying to make their way, but there's no checks and balances. We don't know what some of these groups are producing, we don't know if they're even getting any audience, we're not really sure where the money is going. So, that's a bit of a concern. So, I want to know for sure that we're going to have checks and balances. We want to make sure that these small fledgling groups are going to grow with good, positive performances, and not the kind of performances that I heard from this person, that were actually offensive to them. We do have some wonderful groups who are doing great work here, and the Lost and Found Theatre Company brings in professional and wonderful performances, and I wish I knew for sure that they were going to be an integral partner with this, because I would have complete confidence in where this was going to go. I don't feel that they have been, they've been met with, that they've been as part of a key part, partner and key player in the conversations. I think there has been some, but not enough. So, I want to support this, but I just think that $775,000 is just a little bit too much right now. And I would, I wish we could say, let's do part of this, and in two years, take a look and see where we're going with the performing arts, see where we, what our next steps are. Is it growing? Is it building? Is it quality performances? Are we keeping people here in the community, artists, set builders, writers, producers? Are we keeping them here in the community? And are we keeping our own citizens here in the community to come and see all those different performances? Because if they're still going to Toronto and London and Hamilton, then we're not accomplishing what we are. And I know two years is a very short timeframe, but we have partners here who have been extremely successful, and are we actually using them as the best foundation and the best next steps?
Okay, thank you. Counselor Gazola.
Yeah, no, in making my comments, I failed to thank Ms. Robson for, I sent a ton of questions to her, I'm sure she took a great deal of her time, and I did want to just say thank you, that I appreciate her answers.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. I just want to go and mention that I am a member of the Arts and Culture Community Advisory Committee, and Pam Patel is part of that, and she is in favour of this, the whole committee. We talked about this, they roundly and firmly support it. I wanted that to be out there. Again, bringing up the number of productions that Greenlight Arts has put out, 15 productions since 2016, done at the hub. I think Ms. Robson and Ms. Ditanato have done an excellent job in gathering it together and putting it together. It's a huge project, and again, I think for our, both for our tactical and our artistic communities, this is a great thing, and it's going to bring us a return.
Okay, it looks like those are all the comments, I'll make my own now. I will be supporting this wholeheartedly, as I did at committee. I think between the things that we heard firsthand, for those of us who took the time to go on the tour, along with the delegations that we heard from at committee, and along with the comprehensive work that has been done by staff in terms of this report, I believe that this is the right way to go in terms of our evolution of this site. The partnership that exists right now between the Accelerator Centre and Arts Build Ontario is unique. It's working, we're hearing it's working, and it's being successful, because we're having arts organizations, and we're having tech companies who are going in there. There is more demand than there is space, which is a good thing. There will be opportunities for folks to essentially graduate out of there and move into other spaces in the downtown or elsewhere in our community, as they grow, as companies like Alert Labs did, for example. And that is exactly what we want to see. You know, the notion was made that perhaps it was going to be too noisy at times by some groups for the tech companies. Well, that's a choice that people are going to make when they decide they want to go in a space like that. It's not meant to be a library, it's meant to be a place where these companies, whether they're hardware, or software, or digital media, and these arts organizations and businesses actually can collide with each other, and can interact with each other, and can further their hopes, dreams and aspirations in terms of growing the art sector or the tech sector in our community. Is this the ultimate solution? No, it's not. But I think it's the right solution in our ongoing evolution in this respect, and in coming years, we'll no doubt be looking at this further and looking at how do we grow this even further. And if, you know, we have too much demand, that would be a good problem to have, because quite frankly, I'd rather see these arts organizations staying here and not going down to Hamilton or London, or other cities, which right now, we're losing them to, quite frankly, because folks are not finding the uptake that they hoped for here. And I think this, along with a number of other things that are happening in the not-for-profit sector locally right now, will only help to further solidify it and send a strong message, which is exactly what we need to do right now. So, a recorded vote has been called. I can ask for the clerk to activate that, please. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, we'll go to Community and Infrastructure Services Counsel, Galloway, Seelak.
Yeah, it's moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Sarah Marsh, that items one through eight be approved.
Okay, thank you. And I'll deal with number eight separately. Are you on that item, Counselor Marsh? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I just would like to move a further amendment of the, of number eight, so that we would have an additional deferral of the decision regarding sidewalk infill on Fairmont Road until, at the very latest, September 24th council meeting, to allow staff an opportunity to address technical challenges in the design of the roadway and sidewalk. We did a walkabout on Thursday, June 7th, and it became clear that the preliminary design did not account for some of the design challenges in terms of did not account for some of the design challenges in terms of driveway length and some of the trees that are more mature than had been originally assessed as to whether or not they'd be impacted, so, yeah.
Okay, so I'll deal with the deferral part of Fairmont Road first, and separate that out from the rest of number eight. Thank you. Seconder, Counselor Schneider. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. The balance of number eight? All those in favor? Oh, just Mauser separately? You want, okay, sorry. That's fine. So I'll deal with Mauser Avenue next, then? No, no, but Mauser needs to be separate because of the conflict that Counselor Singh has. So I'll deal with Mauser Avenue next? And you want a recorded vote, Counselor Gazzola, on that? Okay. So we're just voting on Mauser right now? Those opposed? You stood up for your favor, but you're showing the opposed.
Oh, I just passed the call.
Oh.
That is a little too fast.
Okay, that's fine. So one opposed, and one conflict is noted. It carries. And the balance of the report, do you want a recorded vote on that as well? Okay. Those in favor? Those opposed? And that is carried as well. The balance of the report? Those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Moving on to unfinished business? New business? Counselor Galloway-Seelock?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, at the end of this, ask staff for a review of a policy. So if you could just indulge me for a minute. I'd like to address a recent article written about me and two other councillors in a column in the Kitchener Citizen. It called out three people when there are others whose attendance is worse. This article was written talking about the lack of attendance at advisory committee meetings with relation to being Chair or Vice Chair of the Standing Committee. It is unfair and inaccurate without context. For example, I'll give you the context with Kayak, the Kitchener Youth Action Council. They meet every week and don't expect attendance from councillors. I've spoke to both Dannan and Prior Marla, and they knew if they needed me that I could be there. But realistically, it's an action-oriented group, and they don't expect the councillor to be there. The Grand River Accessibility Advisory Committee, it's a non-voting member of the committee, and I attended regularly until I had children, and then my attendance wasn't perfect. However, over the last four months of 2017, I didn't attend because my mom was dying and I lost my rock and my babysitter. That's why this year, I took a step back from that. I've always been on that committee, but because of this major life change, I chose to take a step back. To link chairing or vice-chairing of standing committees isn't relevant. Over 12 years, I believe I've missed only four meetings of committee or council. Three of those were due to having babies, and the other one was for a mission that I got to go on to Africa for FCM. The same cannot be said for many other members of council who choose to go on vacation a number of times throughout a year or even a term of council and miss meetings, not only committee meetings, council meetings, but also advisory committee meetings. To try and relate committee advisory attendance to qualifications of chairing or vice-chairing standing committees is irrelevant. We also need to recognize the life circumstances or other city-related functions that attribute to missing advisory committee meetings. To have my attendance questioned during my mom's illness and subsequent passing is extremely sad, disheartening, disrespectful, and hurtful. Having said all this, I would like to encourage my council colleagues to think before they write. Don't write fake news or things that you don't have the context around. Focus on the issues, your opinions, and things happening in your ward, rather than being nasty to others. We teach our kids not to be bullies and to not sit quiet and stand up for yourself. I bring this forward today to stand up for myself, but also defend things that have been said about me that are false and lack context. Having said all this, I ask staff to review the policy around councillor columns in the Kitchener Citizen.
Thank you. Counselor Singh on this?
Yes, thank you. So I was also named in this, the citizen submission by the councillor, and I was planning on having a one-on-one conversation. Surprised that my name would be included in that article in reference to none of the committees that I sit on, but my name brought forward in questioning my attendance on those committees. I compliment Counselor Galloway-Seelock in having the courage to bring this discussion forward, because I think our code of conduct does matter. What we say, the factuality of it, absolutely matters. And even for myself, if I may have missed the odd committee meeting on those that I do sit on, every one of us deals with personal circumstance. My wife and I just had a new child. My wife went through a difficult pregnancy. This is something I shouldn't have to justify, but unfortunately, I'm having to. And again, my name being dragged to committees that I don't sit on, on top of it, gives me, you know, set aside the agitation, but surprise. So again, I think this is a important review, where staff should give suggestion of what the proper code of conduct should be, on what we write in our articles and how we communicate to our residents.
Counselor Schneider?
Thank you, Mayor. I was also named in this article, and I find it disrespectful and false and very hurtful that my attendance has been challenged. On committee and council meetings, I believe it's impeccable, and you can check it, you'll see. To assume that if one does not attend every single citizen advisory committee meeting, that you're not dedicated, and to try and carry that and paint that over to our committee and council meetings is disgraceful to me. There are times when, for example, I have a citizen advisory committee meeting that is at the same time that I have a Region of Waterloo Airport Aeronautical Noise Committee meeting, I have to make the choice. So one month, it'll all attend the meeting at the airport, and the next one, I'll attend the advisory committee meeting. You can speak to anyone, I believe, on my citizen advisory committee meetings, and they'll tell you that I attend, and I participate, and I support, and I build connections for them. So I just wanted to get that out there.
Counselor Singh?
Yeah, I didn't want to say more, but something else came to my mind, and I, you know, it's just having to defend yourself unnecessarily and goes to it. I wish that same person had one-to-one conversation with me where I could have mentioned my level of involvement in my ward, where I have monthly meetings, where I think there are few around this horseshoe that have that level of engagement, or the amount of commitment and time I dedicate into my ward in helping organize events with my neighbourhood associations. I wish I'd been able to communicate that with that person. So again, it's, I think, been unfair to be put into this light, and again, I hope the new policies that could be implemented to our guidelines would help prohibit, you know, such future conduct.
Counselor Fernandez?
Since we're all talking about me, maybe I should have at least a minute to defend myself. I made sure that I researched committee minutes. I reviewed them over three years, and I made sure that what I said was correct. I did not use fake news. I took into consideration babies' births, parental illness, part-time jobs, and other additional factors. But it is true, we all miss meetings, but some of them, when people are fighting to attend, to be on a committee, as occurred with the Kitchener Blooms, and then to see nobody attend for five meetings, I think it needs to be talked about.
Okay, Counselor Galloway-Seelock, and then I'm going to bring this to an end, because...
Can you please explain to me how the relevance of being a chair on a standing committee is relevant to your attendance at advisory committee? And over the course of three years, I've had three babies, and so I didn't make every meeting. But I appreciate you taking that into account when you decided to put an article together that did not have context behind it.
So I will say that I think members of council need to hearken back to why those Kitchener Citizen columns were made available to members of council. They were made available to members of council so that you can share news about what's happening at the city, so that you can share news about what's happening in your ward. Unfortunately, we've been finding ourselves where people are using that as some sort of platform to try to send political messages, which is not what the intention of it was. I think people need to remember that the space is being paid for by ratepayers in the community. And unfortunately, in the last few months, we've seen situations where councillors have had to do retractions, where comments are being made that are being challenged now, and that's not what the intent of this, what the intent of the columns was. And so really, number one, I think we need to deal with the, sorry, the direction that Counselor Galloway-Seelock is requesting, but number two, I would urge council to keep that in mind with respect to your columns, because, you know, there may only be one or two left this term, but it's not acceptable, and you're putting staff in a difficult situation as well, because ultimately, they see all these columns ahead of time as well, and they should not have to be dealing with these situations. People need to self-censor themselves in terms of being responsible in terms of the writing that goes on, and not having it to come down to threats of legal action and then apologies being pertinent and so on. So Counselor Galloway-Seelock, do you have a motion? If you can write it out? Sorry. Counselor Galloway, oh, sorry.
You can take it. My motion is pretty simple, that staff to review the policy around councillor columns in the Kitchener Citizen. So it's policy around.
So clerk, even for direction to staff?
It's new business.
I mean, I can take, wave notice of... I think this is direction to staff. I don't think I need notice. What's our normal practice? Or I can wave, I can wave, what do I need to do to wave notice? Which is, which is what, two-thirds? Okay. Okay, so I'll deal with it. So we're waving notice on, somebody want to move, waving notice, a motion?
Okay, so waved, a seconder to wave, Counselor Singh?
And a recorded vote?
Absolutely. If you want to click in, you sure can.
Explanation from the councillor as to what is involved in this review? What are staff going to tell us what to write?
Counselor Galloway-Seelock?
No, not what to write, just maybe the parameters around in the code of conduct within how we present ourselves in our columns.
Just in the citizen?
That's what I'm looking for right now, because that's the only avenue that we have. I guess it could be the citizen and neighbourhood association letters, because those are the ones that are paid by the city.
You can still write your blogs, Frank, or Counselor Etherington.
Well, I will start on one. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we're moving, waving notice, a motion. Recorded vote has been requested. Those opposed? Motion carries. We'll now deal with Counselor Galloway-Seelock's motion, seconded by Counselor Singh. Recorded vote has been called. Oh, Counselor Davies, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to support this, but I just wanted to be clear that I'm not necessarily going to support whatever staff comes back with. I do struggle with this at times, personally speaking, because the thing that does worry me is, I think when we do things like this, in some ways, what we're doing is we're insulating politicians from the public. I think sometimes we're preventing politicians from exposing themselves or exposing their weaknesses, and I don't think that helps for democracy. So I will support the review. I think it's important just to send a bit of a message, but I just wanted to be clear when this does come back that I might not necessarily be supporting at that point.
Mr. Chaplin?
At the risk of inserting myself in the conversation, can I clarify, are we adding the language around newsletters, or is that, that is included?
Sorry, are the neighbourhood newsletters included? Yeah. So the opportunities that are funded by ratepayers. Counselor Gazzola?
Do we have a policy now, dealing with this issue? We're going to review a policy. Do we have a policy to review?
Mr. Chaplin?
Three, Mr. Mayor. I think our first step will be to review whatever applies in this case. I think there may be a number of documents, the code of conduct being one, but I do believe that there were documents that spoke to communications protocols in the past, but we'll have to refresh ourselves in terms of what exists today and whether there's any gap in those.
Counselor Schneider?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to be clear, too. I don't want to be entirely muzzled. I think there's a big difference between the type of column that we were talking about, and if a councillor is passionate about a certain issue and they want to publish the results of a recorded vote, I think that's fair game. I think that's totally appropriate.
Counselor Etherington?
Yeah, along that same line, Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor. I don't like being muzzled by anyone in any circum- I don't like being muzzled by anyone in any circumstance, so I would be against this. I agree with some of the points raised by Counselor Galloway-Seelock and Counselors Singh, but that, to me, depends upon the person writing whatever they're writing. They have to make sure they're accurate, they have to make sure that it encloses the circumstances that surround these incidents. As a professional journalist, if I don't check those things, I get my butt sued off, and that's the way, that's the way the law stands, and I'm perfectly happy with that. I'm not happy with being told what I write, whether it's for the citizen, the neighborhood association, or the record, or anyone else. So, I would oppose this. We already have a code of conduct.
Counselor Galloway-Seelock?
I just wanted to say that it's not to sit there and tell you what you can and can't write, it's maybe just some guidelines that we should follow to be a little bit more respectful to each other, and that's really where I was coming from with this.
Okay, if you want to reply, Counselor, then I'm going to...
Just very quickly, how respectful is it to bring up such trash words as fake news? You can do without that. How respectful is it to bring up to anyone mention of Trump fake news?
Okay, guys, I'm going to end the...
Then use other words.
We're going to go on to the vote now. Okay. Recorded vote has been requested for a review of the policy. Those opposed? Motion carried. Questions and answers? It's been moved by Counselor Davy, seconded by Counselor Ionitis, that leave be given the mover and secondar to introduce the bylaws listed on the agenda, and the same be taken as read a first time and stand referred to committee of the whole, all in favor? Opposed, that's carried. It's been moved by Counselor Yonetski, the council resolve itself into... Oh, actually, I should have, were there, there weren't any extra bylaws, okay, there is?
Sorry, there was one extra. There's an extra...
Okay, great. It's been moved by Counselor Yonetski, the council resolve itself into committee of the whole, all in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Counselor Yonetski? Move that the bylaws be considered, taken as read a second time and be recommended for enactment?
Yep. I call for a mover for the bylaws to be read a second time. Counselor Fernandez? All those in favor? Carried. First item on the committee of the whole is the tenders, item number one, dealing with the Metzloff Road. Do I have a mover? Counselor Fernandez moves it.
Counselor Gazzola has a question. Counselor Gazzola?
I was going to move it if the chair was watching.
A little late.
But I have some questions on it.
Go ahead.
My questions are on four and five.
Oh, four and five? Okay.
We're on one, one, sub, four and five.
Okay. Is there, dealing with number one, any questions on number one?
One, 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 one. I have questions on one, four.
Oh, you said one, I just said four, I thought, sorry, go ahead with number one. You have a question?
No, I have a question on 1.4 and 1.5.
Oh, okay.
1.1 is where you're at.
All right, I didn't quite understand your point system there. Anyway, all those in favor of number one? Opposed, carried. Item number two, dealing with domestic water meters, do I have a mover? Counselor Schneider moves it. Any discussion? Counselor Davy?
Sorry.
Sorry, I know this, I wish, could have given staff a heads-up on this, but I, whenever this comes across, I'm reminded, I like to see the point where we stop buying what I'm going to call dumb water meters. Is there a plan in place to begin looking at the technology for automatic, technology to automatically read these water meters and use some sort of communication process so we don't have to send people out to read them?
Ms. McGoldrick wants to speak. Counselor Yonetski?
I'm sorry, Ms. McGoldrick wants to speak?
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Kormack.
So, through you, Chair, yes, we are looking at advanced metering infrastructure as part of the Innovation Lab work, and looking to see how we can connect into the smart network, so that is certainly something that's currently being investigated.
Very good. Can I just ask, I don't want to hold you to it, but do I have an idea of when we might see something related to that in the future?
I'll provide you with an update.
Okay. Or I'll follow up with you. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on item two? All those in favor? Opposed, carried. Item number three, dealing with the Schweitzer Street? Counselor Gazzola's? Do I have a mover for number three? So moved, Mayor, any discussion? All those in favor of number three? Opposed, carried. I need a mover for number four? Counselor Gazzola?
Yes, I'll move it, and I'll ask my question, okay?
It's on.
No, there's a humongous surplus in this account. A hundred percent surplus or something. I'm just curious, a year or so ago, we approved a whole new plan for stormwater management, and as a result of that, we had all kinds of projects, and as a result of that, we increased the rates this year. Now, I'm seeing, is this one of those projects, and, you know, if it is, it's off by a hundred percent, you know, did we need to, did we need to have that increase in rates this year?
Mr. Reedman? Oh, sorry, Counselor Yonetski?
Yeah, Mr. Reedman?
Through the Chair. So, staff do their best to try to identify a proposed budget for different areas, and this is only one-line item in a multimillion-dollar program for stormwater management, so, yes, the rates were determined based on the overall program, not just based on the information that came in on this one-line item in tender.
Yeah, I'm sorry, but I didn't hear all of that.
So, through the Chair, so staff do their best to try to estimate what the costs of different programs that would come in at. This one did come in under budget, so there is a bit of a surplus in this line item, but the overall stormwater management program is a multimillion-dollar program every year, so the rates were set based on the overall program.
Okay, I'll accept that now, but it's more than a bit of a, a bit of a surplus, it's a hundred percent, so that's quite a bit.
Any further questions on item four? All those in favor? Opposed, carried. Item number five, do I have a mover for the asphalt multi-use trails, et cetera? Moved by Counselor Fernandez. Counselor Gazzola?
I have a question on this, and I'm not sure this is the right place, but I'm going to bring it up. There's money left over in the pot, and I've had a request in for a number of years with a trail in the Deer Ridge area that keeps washing out and never gets replaced, or it's, if it does get fixed up a little bit, it's fixed up for a month or so, and then it gets washed out again, and the people, the neighborhood tried to get a, one of the city grants to try to put money towards that project, and that got, they were not on the list, they got turned down. I guess my question is, what do we have to do to correct that problem there, and being that there's almost a $200,000 surplus here, can those, can those funds be allocated in that direction, or could they, I don't want to butt in the line or what have you, but can they be considered for something like that?
Mr. Eber?
Through the Chair, so I cannot speak to that specific project, but what I can speak to is the funding that's being allocated to these projects are intended for sidewalk infill. You'll notice that the asphalt multi-use trails that are listed are in lieu of sidewalks, so they're intended to be there instead of a sidewalk, so multi-use trails made more sense in those two locations, but the project Counselor Gazzola is speaking to is a trail that's outside of a road right-of-way, so it wouldn't be funded through this program specifically, but I can pass over to Denise to speak to details on that.
Ms. McGoldrick? Are you finished, Counselor Gazzola?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Yonetski, Ms. McGoldrick wants to reply?
I'm sorry?
Ms. McGoldrick wants to reply?
Oh, I didn't see her pass Jeff. Ms. McGoldrick?
So, through you, Chair, Counselor Gazzola raised a specific trail issue, which is actually quite complex, because the trail is located in the Grand River, it's subject to ice floes and damage related to the river, and we know we've seen two, within the past year, two significant events. So, yes, staff have looked at and have done some engineering analysis related to options around restoring that trail, shifting the trail location. It is quite complex and requires some prioritization in terms of budget allocation to it. So, through this year, the analysis is being completed, and then we'll be looking to see how it can be prioritized through the off-road trail budget dollars.
Okay, you have two other counselors, Counselor Galloway-Seelock and Counselor Marsh in the queue. Anybody else to speak? Go ahead, who was first?
Sorry?
Who was first?
Counselor Galloway-Seelock was first.
Okay, Counselor Galloway-Seelock?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a note on the asphalt multi-use trail A1, the Strasburg Road. I believe that's actually a Ward five, as opposed to four.
And Counselor Marsh?
Thank you, just regarding the concrete sidewalk infill on Lancaster Street East. This has been a long-awaited, long-anticipated addition to the, it's a missing link to the sidewalk on Lancaster Street, and I've had a few emails from residents when they caught wind that we are going to be installing sidewalk this year after decades of advocacy. They're so thankful to council to finally be able to install sidewalk along that section. I can forward those emails. I just received them in the last couple hours, so I will forward those to counselors so that they can understand that this is really having a positive impact.
Anybody else? Okay, do I, all those in favor of item five? Opposed, let's carry. Do I have a mover for number six? Counselor Etherington? Is there any, sorry, not, it was on item six, it was item two, dealing with the encroachment request for the sign. That was Counselor Etherington. There's any discussion? I do have a question. Can I ask her?
Mayor, you're the Chair.
Okay, just wanted to, I'm wondering why they have gone ahead and put up a sign without any permit, without any process, and don't they need to go through a committee of adjustment? Because it's a sign issue, they seem to be a violation to our procedures.
Ms. McDonald wants to answer, you're Miss, oh, sorry. We need to change this. You're not Miss Palmer.
Through the Mayor, to the Chair. We often go and do it, and then we catch them after the fact, and then we have to ask them to follow up. So, in this case, I believe the sign, it's the encroachment that they're missing, which I believe they're applying for here, so we've advised them that they're supposed to have done this before, they put the sign up, so they're fully aware and understand that not to do that again, but unfortunately, this happens. We see this quite often in the downtown, and a lot of it is simply the sign company not advising their client appropriately.
So, are you saying that this was a previous sign there, and this is just a replacement of it? I just want to understand that. I'm having a little trouble with my speaker here.
Through the Chair, I'm trying to recall if there was a sign there before or not, but from what I understand, it was simply the business not, actually, a lot of times they don't call the city before they, and if the sign company doesn't follow up with the city, sometimes they do it, and we catch them after the fact, and from what I understand, this is the case, so the sign company went up probably ill-advised, didn't put it up before getting all their approval, so now they're coming to get their approvals.
Okay, thanks. I'd still like to hear a legal opinion on this, too. Ms. McDonald?
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, there's really nothing I can add to it, this does happen from time to time, and it's just a question of authorizing the encroachment. Once council authorizes, the agreement will be signed, and the sign permit will be issued, and all will be corrected.
Okay. I'll accept that. Any other first, other questions on this item? All those in favor? That's carried. Clerk? I, oh, is there any additional items?
Through you, Mr. Chair, we have one light-starter item emanating from caucus today with respect to off-site works, construction, and inspection agreements.
And this is an item that was, we have notes in front of us on this. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, carried. Where are we here? I move that we rise and report for the committee of the whole. Do I have a secondar?
Somebody else needs to move that, so I'll move that.
Oh, you do that?
Yeah, you do the vote.
Okay.
All those in favor?
All those in favor? Opposed, carried. That the proceedings in the recorded community interests and the conflicts taken in the meeting of the committee of the whole held as date as attached heretofore and forming part of these minutes are hereby adopted and confirmed. All in favor? Opposed, that's carried. It's been moved by Counselor Davy, seconded by Counselor Ionitis, that the bylaws listed on the agenda for third reading be taken as read a third time, be finally passed and numbered serially by the clerk. All in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Moved by Counselor Marsh, that we now adjourn. All in favor? Opposed, that's carried.